We'll call this meeting to order and start with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome. August meeting. You can tell we're still in summer mode, but not much longer. All right, so we're gonna start with our board bravos and updates. Things are still happening in the summer. Anybody have anything they wanna?
It's evening a lot, probably we've gotten this because there's so many things going on tonight and have been going on with the... I went to the middle school back to school night last week and that was great. And all the elementary back to school nights are tonight.
I just left Moira, it feels good, yeah.
I know Ness Fest with the incoming freshmen and there was a parent meeting, a freshman meeting that went well at the high school.
Yeah, I would encourage everybody to check out our new website because that's a good place to find all of the events coming up. And that's part of the reason why we have kind of a smaller crowd tonight is our principals are welcoming families and they're super excited about it. We have our first day of school, Wednesday. Get those last sleepovers in.
I think I had some school slides being dropped off on my porch as I left the door, like they're just, they're just all descending up to the house.
We do have a couple other bravos that actually they were gonna start off, we were gonna have some student recognitions, but unfortunately with the summer events and some people going away to college, we're gonna turn them into bravos if that's okay. We may be able to bring some of these individuals back in September. Our Highlands Middle School had a national essay winner, Anna Reynolds, who we will recognize probably at a future meeting, very exciting. Our film broadcast program had four different groups and individuals represented with Emmys, regional Emmys, and in a lot of ways that serves as a state championship because these individuals will all be eligible for for the national competition, so we'll see how they do a little bit later into the, into the fall. Kentucky Journalism Teachers Association had thirty-three students recognized this past year. It is a program that is blossoming and four were best in the state. And so we hope, I actually believe that they'll be on the September agenda. And I think it's worth repeating again how well our students did on their AP scores. We talked about this a little bit last month and Keith's gonna give a presentation in just a little bit. So I will steal your thunder, Keith. Hopefully you can talk about the seventy-one more exams and the twenty-four more passing students and the two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars score. It's a really, really great. And our Hall of Fame presentation till this Friday for the white scrimmage. And then we will announce all of the Hall of Fame winners and the dinner on Saturday, right?
All right, so still things happening and that'll keep you thinking.
And I will say our students, I couldn't have been more proud of our students on opening day. We had four students that addressed our faculty and staff and really knocked it out of the park. Couple teachers and people here and hopefully you guys felt the same way, our students really do as proud as they always do.
Yes, I heard some really good comments about that, so nice job on the selection of those individuals to speak. So, speaking of excellence, we're gonna celebrate some Tradition of Excellence, a very worthy award winner, so.
We have a total award, our Tradition of Excellence Award. We've been trying to recognize Ms. Elise Carter actually for several months, so we're glad to be able to do so publicly. Elise is our NEA National Winner, and you don't get to say that very often where you have an individual in your school district that is tops of all fifty states. So Elise was not just a finalist, but she actually was the award winner for the G. Woodson Memorial Award for the Teaching of Human and Civil Rights Education. It was recognized in Portland. In my head, I had Washington DC, I think I always send a national winners day in Portland this past summer. And again, I can't say enough how big of an honor it is to be up amongst those put forward across all fifty states and to be a national winner. So I'm gonna invite you up to get our Tradition of Excellence Award and hopefully get a round of applause here. Tell us about Portland, what we see in Portland?
All kinds of things, very eclectic, there's a lot of trees. I mean, it's tricky, I don't see a lot. But it's great, we ate at a couple restaurants that are central, first like donuts are evidently really a big thing in Portland. Didn't know that, everybody told me, I mean, I don't turn down that much, so. But yeah, so it was busy, it was a quick trip. I flew in Tuesday, I had basically Tuesday night, we were practicing all day Wednesday and I left Thursday morning. So I didn't get to see too much, but it was very cool.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
What an honor, a national award winner said thank you, Ms. Carter. All right, Julie's trying to communicate the forum, we have nobody? All right, let's move into action items. And first up, we have Chad's gonna share with us where we are in terms of the athletic complex, which is getting some use. And we'll hear more about that.
All right, so regarding Tower Park, at this point, we've successfully gotten all the soccer teams on the field for practices. And we are on target to get the games to start in mid-September on the host those. Blue track is finished, it's very blue if you haven't seen it yet. Masonry is nearing completion. So a lot of the outside looks very good for all the buildings at this point, some of the windows have been installed. Let's see, there's a platform for the parking lot as we get closer to finish that masonry work. And when you step inside the buildings, there's lots of, between walls and different things inside, you start to really get a good idea of what the spaces are gonna look like. So those are coming along well and will follow the rest of the complex. So, and video board arrived today, so that should be installed here soon.
Big question is, our hopes are that we'll be able to have competitions actually in the month of September. We seem to be on track for that.
Yes, we are on track for mid-September.
I think as we talked last week, when, like, when, when inside and everything gonna be completed?
The hope is inside, they're looking toward late September, early October to finish all the rest of the building. As far as the whole site, one of the big, within any construction project, and like asphalt per parking lot, it's gonna be weather dependent. And so we say we're on target for mid-September, but depending on what happens between now and then, a lot, if it gets very wet, that's gonna be the whole stack, right, at the wrong time. So there are things like that that are just variables as we move forward.
We've had conversations about ribbon cuttings and our hope was that we would connect it to the soccer season. That is looking less likely, if our ribbon cutting is one that welcomes the community in to see all of the spaces and to be able to gather, it may be more October or early November before we're able to schedule that.
It's looking awesome.
Yeah, glad to see students utilizing that, getting practice in there and, yeah. So with all of those great things come, I'm sure some pay applications, change orders.
It's fun part. So the Morrell Pay App, it's one-point-two-million dollars. It is kind of, upon the project update, it follows network and that's kind of the next stage for it.
Right, that's, if work happens, usually payment follows.
We don't have any pay apps we're expecting those completed.
I don't know what I'm talking about.
Well, this is lucky number thirteen. I think Taylor Swift likes this number. So, do I hear approval of a motion for pay application thirteen to Morrell Construction Company in the amount of one-million-two-hundred-and-fifty-seven-thousand-nine-hundred-and-twenty-three dollars and sixty cents for the Highlands Athletic Complex at Tower Park Project?
I'll make a motion.
Do I hear a second?
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And Glenn, just to respond to your question, you could expect one each month as they complete work. When you see the pay applications, they're, it's work verified by the contractor. And then there's a portion that is maintained and retained until the completion.
Yeah. We're almost there.
It feels that way and then it's not.
It'll probably be January before you get your final.
I'll be up for a little bit. All right, then moving on to the change orders. So we have three change orders that are, one change order with three proposals are included in this. One of which is adding access control and reconfiguring that for the needs of the two different openings. Another one is rerouting some HVAC ductwork that's in mechanical room, it can't fit in the design process. And then the last one's adding a handicap ramp, there's a rear entrance with the asphalt that they kind of, there's some oversight in the handicap sidewalk that had been around that area.
All right, so this change order, need to hear a motion for approval of change order number five in the amount of nine-thousand-eight-hundred-and-thirty-seven dollars for the Highlands Athletic Complex at Tower Park Project.
I'll make a motion.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I think that is it for this evening for you, thank you. All right, Ms. Robinson?
Our next item is something that we have carried for the last several years around employee perfect attendance incentive. We historically had one that recognized perfect attendance for the whole year, which we just honored at opening day. We had nine individuals that were able to receive that. But then we implemented a process two years ago that would recognize in shorter spurts. And so we also do a drawing each month for individuals who, at random, who may have achieved perfect attendance for that month. I will say, and I don't have the exact numbers here to quote them, so I won't make those up and hit that. But I do know that our employee attendance has improved, so I know we're at at least a three-year high this year looking at attendance, which was great. So my request is that we continue this process where we recognize with a random drawing each month and individuals at the conclusion of the year who had perfect attendance.
And obviously, we appreciate our, you know, teachers making all their best efforts to get in. That's what's best for students, that instruction, so we always value that. So if we value that, we shall reward. And with that, do I hear a motion to approve, approval to authorize the superintendent to award a yearly perfect attendance bonus and develop monthly incentive drawings from September twenty-five through May of twenty-six?
Motion.
Okay, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Continuing in with some other policies.
As you know, last month we did our second read on all of the policy updates that were suggested as a result of changing legislation, as well as updates from, that the School Board Association recommended for a variety of purposes. One policy that we want to introduce for a first read actually also came from the changes in our legislative process. There was a law that changed that asked school boards to create a policy by 2030. So they gave us a bit of a runway that would establish paid maternity leave following birth of a child for a mother after following birth of the child. And there was some thought, the reason why we're looking at it now as opposed to before is the law was a little bit ambiguous in trying to determine exactly how that would be laid out. There was some thought about postponing it here and I'm really proud to say that when we had our annual meeting, our planning meeting, this board wants to be out of the gate and be first. And we had the ability to meet, I'm gonna thank Sarah for sitting down with me and we crafted some language and embedded it in a couple of different ways. And I'm really, really proud to present a recommendation for a first read of policy that would have paid maternity leave beginning this school year for immediately following birth of a child that a mother would have within six weeks following that birth, up to thirty days without pulling from the sick leave. And then with doctor's notes for an additional six week, they could utilize sick leave at that time if they were to choose to do that. So I think it's a really great opportunity for us to be out in front. I have spoken with our principals, I've spoken with a couple of our representatives from the Education Association, and their happy emotional responses is what I would say. So I think this is a really great chance to be a little different, be out in front. We may see that the implementation of the law may change over time, but we have five years to do it anyway, so. So I recommend it for a first read, it would go into full effect if there are no changes going into, or with changes going into a second read in September. But I'm also, our intent is to apply it from July one moving forward of this year. So I'm open to questions or comments?
No, I think it's great that we're going, I mean, it's something, like you said, the summer retreat and everybody, I think it felt pretty strong. I thought, let's go ahead and get it going right away, so.
And I mean, I think when you think about, once again, valuing our staff members and the challenges and valuing family, right? And allowing for those things and not having to make some choices that don't reflect that, you know, this is great and thank you. I know Sarah worked a lot with you on that, that's much appreciated.
Well, just grateful, you know, I think I was like, well, just do it now. I know that, you know, we do have time, but I think we have time to adjust. If we, you know, stand by the work we did, I think we did do a good job drafting a policy that we can stand behind. I'm just very, very excited and thankful that everybody was kind of fully on board with it. Nobody, you know, hesitated, I think, so.
I think it's just another way to help distinguish us from other districts, something that's more attractive place to be, so, great job.
I'm just giving you a big heart.
Well, I didn't know, I didn't know if you were gonna give us a heart or where were you last?
This is retroactively.
You're like, retro, retro, sorry. We're reaching back to July one, you know, I'm a dish. Thank you for, you know, and that is, you know, for moving forward because a number of us didn't get that opportunity.
Yeah, I mean, if we had the thought, oh, I didn't get that, if that was our attitude, that's a terrible attitude because I went through the challenges, I'm sure you did as well, and I would never do anything if one woman to experience that, so.
You want retroactive fifteen years.
I know, yeah, yeah, I was like, my baby is whatever, fourteen years, nine full months, so, yeah, it's kind of, not getting that ship sailed. But this one hasn't, so. With that, do I hear a motion to, let me get to my right spot, to approve the tentative or the tentative approval of revised parental leave policy, zero-three-point-one-two-three-three and zero-three-point-two-two-three-three based on a first reading?
I'll make a motion.
All right, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have our discussion items, no, we have, yes. First up, our board committee updates.
Already talked about the Hall of Fame.
Yep, just a reminder on that, this weekend will be a celebration, blue and white scrimmage, they'll be introduced. And then induction happens on Saturday evening, so. And then I think we'll be hearing more and more committee updates as the school year starts and things get back in.
Will we call her our executive member, Ann Meyer?
Oh, yes.
It's the education and eggs breakfast and that's always fantastic.
Right, yes, kudos to Ann who continues to, you know, amaze us and works in that area. I think it was a great event, it was just recently held and you guys were able to be there too and you gave away some prizes and recognized the staff, so. Great start to the year for that. And then that moves us into the four, you know, recently teased by Ms. Robinson, the ACT AP report from Keith.
Good evening, so it looks like first, I'm gonna be talking a bit about ACT. You know, again, just really proud of our students, the work that John and Jen done at the high school, his whole teaching staff to really kind of get us where we're at. So just one of the quick highlights that we have here around ACT, this is the junior assessment that we're looking at on screen right now. So our juniors take this as part of their accountability and they shot a twenty-two-point-six, which is a really, really strong score. I don't have a state average yet, but this is an increase. If you look at that cohorts class, what I think I'm most pleased with is it's a two-point-two gain that they had over the time they took it from a sophomore year. So this class assessed as a sophomore and they shot at a twenty-one-point-one. So to go all the way up to a twenty-two-point-six, that's two-point-two points growth, really pleased with that and really kind of speaks to the group, speaks to the group, it speaks at efforts that John and Jen and their teaching staff are doing. So really proud of that work. You see that we're trending over time, continuing to make year-over-year growth, which I'm really pleased with. When we look at the percentage of students who are meeting their benchmarks, I see eighty-five percent of our students met the benchmark in English, sixty-two percent in math, sixty-nine percent in reading, and then science was, we don't have that calculation because that was not an area that was assessed this particular spring. ACT made a change this year, and so that's why I don't have that data. But the percentage of students that met, I should really read, I guess, all benchmarks instead of all four now. Forty-seven percent of our students met all the benchmarks. And so it really speaks to the MTSS efforts that have happened with John and Jen, Kerry Murray, the MTSS teachers, and just all the teachers in the classroom, really proud of their efforts. And most importantly, proud of our students, so really, really pleased with that work and the point of emphasis that they've made there, so. Great job. If you go down and look at the specific scores there, that next sheet, you see one point of highlight with reading coming in at a twenty-three. That's really impressive, that science number should not be here. Twenty-three with reading, and so really proud of those reports and those scores from our high school students and staff, so. Any questions?
Mr. Darnell, are they leaving?
That's a lot of thunder you just brought.
Moving on to AP, our students who did their advanced place testments. So we had some of the highest number of students who've taken advanced coursework. And so again, really applaud John and the teachers for really providing rigorous coursework for our students and then students obviously coming through with that. We had one-thousand-two-hundred-and-forty-six tests that were given this year, that's up seventy-four from the previous year. When we look at the number of students who are re-offering more rigorous coursework too, that's an increase of thirty-nine students. When we look at the number of students who passed exams, we're at four-hundred-and-seventy-five. That's an increase of twenty-eight students from the year prior. So eighty-one percent of our students have taken and passed a test this year. One number that I like to highlight is on the second page there, Ms. Harms, is our Equity and Excellence Report. And the way that that report reads is, if you look at the year, sixty-five percent of our students during the course of their time at Highlands High School have taken and passed an exam. And so to have that, our students get exposure to that high level of coursework and then experience success by passing that exam, sixty-five percent, you can see we're creeping up on some of our top numbers of all time. And so we've got increased numbers of students that are exposed to rigorous courses, increased number of students that are passing and having success in those courses. And so again, I think that's really paying off, really, really proud of that work. Ms. Harms, if you can scroll up, I want to highlight our middle school briefly for a second. We're in the second year where our students are taking our Computer Science Principal course. And you see that we had twenty-four students take that CSP exam with thirteen of them passing that exam this year. So thirteen eighth graders are leaving Highlands Middle School, going into high school, having passed that AP course, which is really, really impressive. Like the previous year, we had a perfect score and that came from an eighth grader. So we have another eighth grader that got a perfect score of a five on the AP exam, or not perfect, but scored a, got to receive the score of a five. And so I think that's really hats off to Mr. Bolbenheim who teaches that class, that's Mike Lipscomb, is gonna be teaching that class at the middle schools this year, both the middle and the high school, that CSP class as that program continues to grow. And so really, really proud of those efforts. Couple of highlights that I want to point out in terms of individual courses. If I look at our AP seminar class, we had a hundred-and-twenty-six students take that AP exam. Not a single one score on that. And so all of the students who took AP SIM, not one student did not receive the score of a one. And so we had seventy-five, seventy-three received a passing score, twenty-five received a score of four or higher and sixteen students received a score of five. And so really wanted to point that out. And then same thing with US History, over a hundred-and-twenty-seven students took the exam, not one score of a one. So everybody, you know, scored higher, and only two, nine students scored a two. So significant number of students that are really scoring well on those AP exams and should really be proud of that work. Mr. Darnell, oh, one other thing, Mr. Darnell gave me an assist here before I came up. In addition to the historical work that we've done this year, even setting higher numbers with one-thousand-four-hundred students signed up to take an AP class this year. And so we are really growing that, if you look at where we were with what, one-thousand-two-hundred-and-forty-six this past year, that number when I present next year is gonna be one-thousand-four-hundred students signed up to take an AP class. So again, really having an appropriate rigorous coursework for our students and really looking to achieve high success, so really proud of their efforts.
Yeah, most ten years at least, right?
Based off, yeah, you know, Brian's got data, I think, tracked back to eighteen thirteen. On my graphic, I have it back to two thousand seventeen, so yes, that is gonna be some of the highest.
You know, and obviously we look at passage rates and that's what we want to get that credit. But one thing we talk about as a board, and I know the high school talks about, just having exposure to college-level coursework, regardless, if students pass, which is what we want them to do, it's still a great practice to get them exposed to that level of rigor and allowing all students. It's not, you know, it's not a score that you need if students want to accept the challenge of that work. They're more than welcome to and seems like they are because that number keeps growing.
Yeah, we're trending good because you got percentages that are getting a passing score right around the same.
More kids doing it and increasing the passage, so.
There's so much to celebrate in the report that Keith has, and he mentioned Mr. Darnell, Ms. Nash and the high school faculty. And that is, it really is a climate changer when you look at, if you look at the number of exams given and the number of individual students and the students who are graduating having been successful in that endeavor. This past year was the highest it's been in at least eight years. And I fully expect that we'll sit here next year just based on how they're trending and the culture that they have, that next year will be a record setter at Highlands High School. And really, when you listen to the students on opening day, two of the students, two of the four students talked about this in the ways that actually exemplify why we're doing what we do. One student was an eighth grader and her conversation was around high expectations and how she didn't believe she could do it and she didn't think she should do it. And the individuals that encouraged her to do it and that she found success and will go into high school now having high school credit. But another student talked about, as a freshman, missing more school than he went to, of having significant challenges. And one of the things he was most proud of, he says, and this year as a junior, I'll be, I'm enrolled in an AP class. And he said something to the effect of, I don't know if I'll pass it, but I'm gonna try. And that access to rigor and expecting more of yourself and knowing that it's okay to work hard, try hard and go for something that's a challenge, that is what we're after, so. Nice job, high school, and thanks for your support of it, Keith. And really, it goes back in the middle in elementaries because they're prepared because of.
Right, and you know, when you say their open enrollment, which is called college board policy, all schools might not necessarily follow that, we do. It takes K through eighth or seventh to make sure students are actually prepared to take on that challenge. So you can say everyone can take the class, but if they haven't been exposed to rigorous grade level, you know, expectations, then.
And defining success by the journey is a huge part of it, so.
Right, all right, well, that brings us to. So, right, alright, well, that brings us to the approval of the consent agenda.
Whereas we might say, tonight in theme, the next episode.
Yes, well, I don't know, do you see any videos of the superintendent, board chair, attending a concert? Not together, but definitely, he'll be with, okay, I'm just gonna, shall we? There's probably another Snoop Dogg lyric in there. Do I hear a motion, oh, no, sorry, with all board members having had the opportunity to review and pursue any questions about the items contained therein, do I hear a motion on approval for the consent agenda? Alright, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries and meeting ends at seven-oh-one.